September 16th, 2020 Special Board Meeting of the Marion County School Board's called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices and put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, we'll be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Yes.
Ms. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Ms. Suzanne Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Can we please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual liberty and justice for all. Now, as the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons, wish to address the school board this morning.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 Florida statute, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at today's meeting either with regard to one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms are due to the school board secretary no later than 9:10 a.m. This afternoon, speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice from me to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to others. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Verbal attacks and profanity are prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. Thank you.
Ms. Press Patino, any people sign up?
Yes, Ms. Melanie Slaughter. Reverend Cummings, I would like to defer any comments until after Mr. Phillips' presentation. I did talk to him before today and told him I would give him that courtesy and if I didn't have any issues after his presentation, that I wouldn't have anything to say.
Thank you. Any other?
No, sir.
May I have a motion to discuss the 2020-2021 Fall Athletics?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor, Second Amendment. Ms. King, no discussion, all in favor, signature by my eye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, start it going. You have some updates for the board?
Thank you, sir. Chairman Cummings, members of the boards, my pleasure to introduce Mr. Jody Phillips and our amazing team of athletic directors who are here with us today to have conversation on fall athletics. Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, Chair Cummings, four members, Press Patino, Bernie Green. Thank you for allowing us to come today. I think it best we'll start and let these folks introduce themselves and we can introduce all of them or just the ones at the table, but ultimately, they're here to answer any questions that you may have. I think the way that we'll handle it, I'll make a general presentation and provide some information about what we're here to do today and you guys can decide.
You go ahead and introduce all of them or let them introduce themselves, all of them.
I'd like for them to speak.
Yeah.
Dale Hall of North Marion High School.
Tony Tucker, Forest High School.
Bruce Swans, Denellen High School.
Lyle Livingston, Westport High School.
Skip Austin, Lakewood High School.
Steve Budnick, Vanguard High School.
Philip Small, Bellevue High School.
Okay. And again, they certainly can step up and answer questions or whatever you desire as we go along. So I thought it appropriate to just maybe back up just a slight amount and say, okay, how did we get here today? Something that's been going on. I'll take you back into April when everything got canceled completely and went away from us and we lost at the end of the year. These guys and a lot of the spring coaches, which even included football at the time, but all the spring sports, they began to work on how we were going to come back at that time and what that might look like because we were anticipating coming back, honestly. We were very optimistic and thought, okay, how are we going to provide these kids with an opportunity? So basically, what happened from there was we began daily and weekly conversations, Zoom meetings with all kinds of folks from across the state, within the district that amounted to coaches, our athletic trainers, team physicians, coaches from different sports. There was a myriad of people and resources that were used. I would even venture to say, just in the district, it was probably 60, 70, 80 different people. And then if you throw on top of everything that these guys were reaching out to, it was hundreds. So there were a lot of information that had to be processed. And through all of this, as we began, you know, when we started back in the summer on June 10th, you guys, we did some training on June 8th and 9th, and on June 10th, we got started. And I'm here to tell you that our folks have been amazing, the students, the student athletes, the coaches has been unbelievable. We're one of the very few districts right now that have not suspended and canceled events and activities, very few. And I'm telling you, it's unbelievable how well our folks have done. I hate to even say it, I really do, but I'm very thankful. So through that process, there were two things that kept coming forward. One was equitable and consistent opportunities for our students to compete. That was on the forefront of everything. And the second thing that kept coming up is really why we're here today, and that was our coaches and our students wanted access to state series playoffs if the FHSAA made it available. So and specifically, again, we're here about fall sports and that opportunity. I think they've earned that opportunity through a lot of different things. And I would tell you, they all start, all of these fall activities or fall state series start at different times of the year or different times of the fall, as early as October 12th for volleyball and golf, okay? This decision, as you are all aware, has to be made by the schools if they are going to opt out. At the present time, everyone is opted in because it is expected as FHSAA member schools that we would participate in state series competition if it was offered. That's part of our standard agreement as being a member school that we would fulfill that obligation. And, you know, I would say there are very few districts out there. I think the latest, the superintendent and I, along with Mr. Viannella and Mr. Whitehouse, were on the superintendent's call a couple of weeks back. We got a lot of feedback about other districts and of course, I'm in daily contact almost with probably 30 to 35 other county athletic directors across Florida. And there are very, very, very few districts that are choosing to opt out or not, excuse me, not allow schools to make their own choice, let me put it that way. So just another point, there's no penalty if a school or administrator for some reason did decide or parents might decide that they didn't want the students to be a part of that for some reason, there would be no penalty for opting out or anything of that nature. But I'll end with this for my part is our recommendation amongst all the seven high schools before you today would be to allow those seven schools to make those decisions, the decision for each sport, sport by sport, and school to school to be able to choose to opt in, which again, is already there in place, but to also be able to opt out if the necessity was there through any conversations that they may have had with students and coaches and families and such.
Question. I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What would be reasons for opting out?
We could find that parents did not want their children to go outside of Marion County or to participate against schools or they didn't want them, they don't, maybe the, and so what that would do ultimately would be, they may not have enough team members if it was a team sport or maybe in a situation like golf, if the school only had two golfers, they would go as individuals and those students may tell the athletic director, we're not interested in doing that, we're ready, we're just ready to be done at the end of the regular season and that's all.
Have you had input as parents, have you had any parents come to any of you guys wanting to opt out of any sports currently, right now? Everybody hear it going like this. Karen don't hear that.
None, all the parents that I've spoken to, which are quite a few, are all asking for the opportunity for us to keep it as is and have that opportunity to move forward.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes. I would like to add to your, sometimes we just got to get the whole picture here, where the school makes the decision, I would like to have it added with stakeholder parent involvement, all stakeholder parent involvement in open meetings when this is discussed. Because I've been around this block way too long to understand how some things work with things like this. Parents, parent stakeholders, those are stakeholders, not parents in the whole school. The parents who are stakeholders, their students or athletes must have input before a decision is made, not just a coaching decision, not just a principal decision. Parent stakeholders must be included, okay? Thank you.
If I may, I totally appreciate it and perfectly fine, makes sense. I will tell you, I don't think that there would be any coach, excuse me, any school that would make that decision without it being based on something that, you know, parents and such would want because I don't, I'm not aware of anyone that doesn't want the opportunity.
Exactly. Well, the reason I say that is because from what I've been told by parents, the decision to not do it in the beginning was made without parents stakeholders. So therefore, history tends to repeat itself if I don't get it on the record. If we've done it once, we're going to set ourselves up to do it again. That was a mistake in the beginning to not bring stakeholders into this whole thing. It's caused a fiasco in this district. So we did it once, I want to make sure we don't do it again. Thanks.
I would say that the playing field has changed since the beginning of this whole saga. As of August 1st, we were at a 19.9% positivity rate here in Marion County, almost 20%, and as of yesterday, we're down to 4.8%. So we are trending in an excellent direction. So personally, I can't think of any reason why we wouldn't want to follow the science and begin to provide many more opportunities. I think that everybody in the community has stepped up and you all have proven that mitigating the risk is well within your capability. You know, the kids are doing well. I'll be interested to see the numbers from this week because of, you know, Labor Day. Hopefully, everybody continue to do the big three and we're not going to see a surge. So I'm all about providing the opportunities.
Ms. McCall?
I want to thank you for your dedication, all of you, because this has been, as we all know, unprecedented time. And our kids, our athletes need to be involved. We all know that many of our kids, if they didn't have athletics, would not do as well in school. So I want to thank you for your continued dedication and work on this. And I'm thrilled that we are in a position that we can say yes to all of it. So thank you all very much.
I echo everything that my fellow board members said and I appreciate the fact that you'll look at each school individually because, you know, we do know enough to know that maybe there'll be reasons at one school rather than putting a blanket over the whole district. So I'm all in for it.
You guys have to make a decision, have to notify the FHSAA by tomorrow, correct?
By Friday at 5:00 p.m.
Friday, okay.
But I will comment and say, if there were, again, extenuating circumstances, they have been more than approachable and workable. So if we ran into an issue where parents came to us two weeks from now and things changed and we had to turn the page.
Right.
I don't know that they want, they would want opting in at that point. That might be tough to convince them of, but certainly opting out because of medical or changes to our community, that's not going to be a problem. So it, you know, I don't think that Friday is going to present us with any issues.
Mr. Phillips, how many fall sports are there, do we have that would be going to regional and state? Football, golf, volleyball?
Swimming.
Swimming, cross country?
And bowling.
And bowling, okay.
I do have a quick question about the fundraisers that emanate from the football games and things like that, different. I know, I think the swim team parks cars for one of the games. I think it's the North Marion Vanguard game, if I'm not mistaken. Does this opening also cover and open those opportunities?
Let me speak on it and then if Coach Olson, she specifically asked about North Marion, I'll let him address that. But I think the decision about parking with probably all of the schools, some of the concerns were there were a lot of student, not volunteers, students as part of the activity.
Right.
And there was a lot of interaction between students and the public because of the resources needed to do a lot of those parking things. And so I think that schools were apprehensive maybe about having that go on because we're not allowing necessarily visitors on campus every day and we're not allowing that visitor interaction with our students. So that's from the standpoint of just parking, I think that the schools were worried about the resource and using students to do it. So if they came up with another possibility or another resource that they could use to get it done, it may be considered. Secondly, I think there were some concerns from the schools that ultimately, in what is going on at these activities, they're our people. These are tough times, there's a lot of unemployment still, and we're already asking them to pay money to come to the game. It might not be a good time to ask them to pay because it's basically our folks that are showing up and, you know, over and over to these venues. So that's the background on.
Right. And I guess I should back up too because then the question becomes, is the general public going to be allowed to attend the games or is there going to be limited numbers of tickets? What's the plan for that?
At this time, what they're, all of the participants, from band, cheerleaders, football players, volleyball player, any participants where it's required to make payment and, or we have a crowd in any way, those participants would get four vouchers that they use home and away. So we would be allowed, I've talked to the FHSAA and the host school would be allowed to make those accommodations, keep them the same, and we could limit even those coming from out of our area, we could limit their attendance at our venues if that was where we were at that time. But if we went somewhere else, we couldn't necessarily control what they were doing in this instance.
We go somewhere outside of our district?
Correct, yes.
So how many tickets are you thinking between the band, the cheerleaders, and the football team?
We came up with, I guess, a high point to look at what a worst-case scenario was and to make sure that we could stay under the 50% threshold of large venues that the governor has under governor's orders. And so somewhere around 900 to 1,000 is what we would be if we had, you know, two larger teams, two cheerleaders, sets of cheerleaders, and a large band.
But on the other side, I mean, that's just our side, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, that would count right now. That's what every, that's at one event for us.
Would be 500 tickets for us and 500 basically for them?
Home and opponent.
Yes, that would, yes, there would be about 1,000, yes.
How much, what's the, what is the seating in our stadiums?
Um.
Our marshal knows. I've asked that question.
No, we have, we have it and I, yes, ma'am, we have it. Mr. Knight provided it to us and.
Because I thought Booster was something like 4,000 or something.
It is, but the problem was is that Lake Weir, North Marion, and Denellen are smaller and so we have to make sure we stay under the thresholds of those situations and to be equitable to everyone, we needed it to be similar. So that's how it was derived.
So the smallest school would be Denellen, the smallest stadium?
Lake Weir.
Lake Weir's the smallest?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow. Okay. I would be curious what Lake Weir's full capacity is.
Uh, just, I'm sorry.
Don't do it.
I had it to ring.
Don't get it. Somebody, a long time ago, we asked this question and I may have an email.
I have, I have it. Do you have it for sure?
A little over 1,000.
Well, the 50%?
Yeah.
50% is about 500.
50% is a little over 1,000.
50% is a little over 1,000.
Correct, yes.
So you're looking at about 500 per side or per team.
The main thing is that the kids get to do this and so.
And are we just opening up when we do do a game, have a game? Are we opening up to, so you're saying basically 1,000 tickets per game, first choice would be to the parents, kids, parents, vouchers?
Each kid gets four vouchers, from what I understand.
Right. And then once they're sold out, they're sold out?
The, are you speaking current or specific to state series? I'm sorry.
Current, current.
Current. We, it's four vouchers and that's it.
Nobody else, okay.
We are not controlling the vouchers though, please understand.
Gotcha.
The student gets them and takes them home and they do whatever they give them, some of them give them to other students.
So we're not open, we're not having a gate, basically?
Basically.
I got you, okay.
So there won't be anyone paying?
Yes, ma'am, they do have to pay.
Okay.
It is expected that they pay.
For those vouchers?
For the vouchers.
Gotcha.
They trade it. You have a voucher, you walk up, you pay.
Correct, correct, right. The voucher just gets them to the gate.
Your interest.
I got what you're saying, but we're saying there's not just a general admission for everybody, they have to have a voucher to get in. I got you.
Everybody knows that, so they don't have to head there.
Okay.
But right now, that sounds good.
Yes, ma'am.
And one reason why we've been so successful so far at flattening the curve, so to speak, is the logistics. You know, every school has really worked hard to adjust their traffic patterns and things like that. What is your plan for spectators and people coming in? You know, are you going to have more than one entrance? Have you gotten that far yet in terms of your plan? If you haven't, I understand because you didn't even know today what the outcome was going to be of all this.
Right.
But I think that's important. The devil's always in the details.
Exactly. And these guys are, believe me, you can't even imagine what they do, did you not? I mean, these people are unbelievable and you are exactly right and we have, they've worked on it throughout the summer with their programs and managing how kids have done from summer, how they're doing it today, pickup areas, parking, so yes, you are correct, it will, once we get to go ahead, we will certainly now understand in some cases, and I think immediately to Lake Forest, we may only be able to have one entrance because it's.
There is only one entrance.
There really is only one.
There's no other way to get in.
To the stadium or to a gym or whatever, but other places, we will be able to certainly work on helping the people get better access that may not be backed up, yes.
Mr. Phillips, how are we handling, for the record, how are we handling volunteers? How are we handling chain crews, refs, and then how are we going to be dealing with the concessions as well?
Just through discussion with superintendent and Mr. Viannella, just very recently, we have been able to work on a plan and it's already in process to approve those folks to volunteer again with basically no student contact. That's, so we've looked at that, things like PA announcers, chain crews, because certainly we've got folks that have been doing chain crews for certain schools for over 30 or 40 years.
Correct.
So those folks will be in place. Same thing for people like in the sport of volleyball that have operated scoreboards and done scoring for certain schools for, again, 30 and 40 years. So we have been able through working with the superintendent, Mr. Viannella, to get that in process.
Concessions, any, are we going to have concessions?
Is there going to be any type of concessions?
To this point with volleyball, I can real, I mean, they, these guys, interrupt me guys if you.
We ran a very basic one, just basically canned sodas, bottled water, candy bars, potato chips, nothing prepared, all packageable, very, and I expect the football concessions will be very similar, it won't be the family style.
Good hamburger.
People are used to, you know.
So they won't be doing, so they won't have the grill and stuff going on.
Come on. That's too bad. One must make sacrifices.
Put packaged items, yeah.
So it'll be, it's all prepackaged, it's a much lower, smaller scale than most of us have done in the past, but if you need a drink, someone will be there to sell you a drink.
Need you to mic.
Right now.
One thing, one thing I will add to that though, that I have noticed as well is there were a couple of instances where we didn't maybe have a concession stand, but they have done a good job. They put out water, bottled water for those that didn't maybe have something to drink or that they needed something and just made it available, made that available to them. So they're cognizant of it, all of them are, but in some cases, the parents are, at this point, just haven't, they've decided that it wasn't best to go down that road.
And the reason I ask about concession, because I do know sometimes revenue from the concessions helps those teams.
Very, very.
And with that being said, we know that we're heading in a different direction financially. So if there's funds that they can get through concessions, we want to kind of make sure that they can still get those funds.
I couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
Did we solve, apparently there was some type of cheerleader problem at Booster? Did we solve that?
Yes.
They can, they can cheer in front of the stands and not in the end zone? Okay.
It's all, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That was the most absurd thing I've heard yet.
There was no, I, just again, to be on record, for coach, they were trying to share information and we, we'll take.
The message got.
We may not have delivered the message properly.
Right.
That wasn't the plan ever, but the plan is made and the coach and the principal, everyone's on board and everyone's happy and we were able to move forward, so yes, ma'am.
Is there going to be like extra people on the sidelines? Let me ask, I'm thinking specifically for football. I know how sometimes you have extra players that's not playing or that may have been injured, all those type of things.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to exclude students that want to be a part of the team and they'll, you know, those students that maybe are dressed in street clothes with just a jersey on, but yes, we.
Will they be required to? Will they be required to have on a mask?
They're going to have on a mask, they will. Our adults, and the way it is, is the adults and the students that are not eligible to participate will be masked. And so you'll see the trainers and the coaches and stuff will be masked.
We need to hear that, we need to, yeah, we need to hear that.
I think also it's important for me to share with all of you as well. I don't want you to come to any game, it's volleyball that's going on or softball. Listen, they're still kids, and they're going to make mistakes. They are not going to be perfect. And these students that are out there competing, and their teammates, and they love each other, and it is going to be extremely difficult for them to be perfect. So don't think that there's not going to be times where we're going to have to educate them and continue to help them remember to do things. And not that you wouldn't, I just, I want, I think the public needs to hear that as well. We, they won't be perfect, but we will work hard at...
And they're going to want to celebrate with each other, right?
Exactly.
And the public did need to hear that.
And we don't need to be, coaches don't need to be reminding them to get apart and all that. We don't need to destroy their psyche over a virus that really has less effect on them than the common flu has on a child under 17 years old. So we don't need to destroy their psyche over this.
They won't say, they will not do that, I can promise you. Those guys love those kids. Ladies and gentlemen, love those children.
And the kids have already shown that they're capable of stepping up, you know? In my visits to schools, they've been amazing, you know, in the day-to-day. And so I think that as long as we continue to share the expectations and give the reminders, it's going to flow, it's going to flow, and a little bit of social contact is not...
And we only have them a certain amount of time. They got the whole weekend together, where they'll be...
We want to mitigate as much as we can.
So what I'm hearing from the board is that they have consensus to participate in the playoff system. Oh, I'm thinking, you're right. Y'all sitting at the table, that's what's throwing me off.
This work session, this board meeting, what's going to look different this morning?
Yes, so, all right, we've heard, anything else you guys need to hear from them?
I'm going to say one more thing while I'm here, and I got all the coaches together. Something that's bothered me for years that you guys can take, can fix for me. There's families that have a lot of children in them, like five children in a family. Sometimes they're raising their, the grandparents are raising several. Some sort of family pass or something for the, because if they got, say, one child's playing football, and the other four siblings want to go, like when things are normal again, and four children want to go, and grandma has them all five, and she has to buy tickets for all these children. There should be some type of, and this one plays JV, this one plays high school. I know a family I'm sitting here thinking about right now that's in that situation. And fix me up a family pass, you guys, so that in the future, we won't be breaking their bank.
Isn't that always, there's always been...
We talked about this last year to you. I don't know if you fixed it yet.
And they have, they have addressed it, Ms. Stacy. All of them have some option available.
Right.
As I brought this up to y'all about a year ago.
The only problem is, is that it's, this, well...
This year's all different.
Well, right, but even so, it's just difficult sometimes when they're going to another school, though. They can do it for all the home games because they can...
No, yeah, 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 yeah. Can't control that, no.
But when they go away, that's where, and things are different, and...
But I was specific, the school that I brought it up to y'all in the first place was Bellevue, and it was the baseball team was one issue. A well-known person, the family had a bunch of kids, they couldn't even hardly afford to go to the games. They had to just about sell popcorn to get to go, so...
They are, they have all worked on that, and I think that they have good solutions.
Okay, good.
And you two guys had some agreement with, I know for football, with M C Y F L kids and JV, and, well, they don't have freshmen anymore, so there was some agreement, because those kids were able to get into those games, correct?
Right, the students that participate in generally any sport at the school, that works.
Right.
And a lot of them, they have lots of ways for students.
To get in.
So, yes.
Yeah, I just want to make it so that, I mean, it helps our attendance, too.
Oh.
And it helps the sports, it helps everything to have people at your game. But, and if they have a family pass, that's going to help the kids win the game, because it's just going to give them a better feeling about the whole thing. Just lots of cheering for them and stuff, so that's, I know I brought it up a year or two ago, and I didn't know where y'all were with it.
I didn't forget about you.
Okay, good, okay, thanks, thanks.
All for motion.
Hold on, can I speak? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure we didn't check with the slaughter.
Yeah, I've gotten some texts, so can I address a couple things?
I just want to, I'm sorry, I just...
That's okay, I appreciate it, Mr. Phillips. Okay, Melanie Slaughter, 4525 Southeast 12th Avenue, Ocala, Florida 34480. Are the players going to have to wear a mask during the game?
What, it's, it's, it's a, do you want me to address?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we would always allow that to be a choice of the student. We're not making it mandatory in any way, but the student would have that option. I mean, the coach isn't going to tell them they can't or that they have to. Either way, the students will more or less decide what they're comfortable with and how they want it to be, but that's how we want it to look.
That's good.
For outdoor sports, like cross-country, football, do you have to wear a mask if you're in the stands or you're out on the field watching it?
The students that are not eligible to participate in the contest, and the adults that we have that are our students and our employees and such, we would want them in masks per the expectations of the district. I don't, the fans that are up in the stands and other folks, that is just going to be...
We've got them spread out enough already.
They would, they would make that decision themselves personally. I don't, we, we're asking everyone to follow the resolution, whether even from a spectator and fan standpoint, but I don't think, unless someone tells us, I don't think we were looking to police...
The resolution, the resolution says all school property.
All school board property.
Right, that's, that's why I got the text.
Yeah.
That's what it says.
So, I mean, I don't...
So, so there's, if it's all school property, that still means all school property for those, especially those even in the stands.
People have ways of, wearing the mask like this where they can breathe. I see it all the time. So there's ways to get around it, for anybody that wants to get around it, they can get it like this.
We're not trying to promote people getting around a resolution.
Well, there are going to be people that can't breathe now, because they've got asthma, so...
They may do that, but...
They just want to know if they need to bring a mask or not.
Yes.
If you say you have to bring one, then there's really nothing you can do. But if you don't tell people, which they've not been told yet, they're going to show up and refuse to wear it because nobody told them they had to.
Attorney, attorney green.
School board property is the resolution when you can't social distance.
Exactly.
All right.
When you can't social distance?
Yeah.
So if they're spread out, then that's different.
If they're spread out.
They need to bring a mask so that if they're not social distancing, they have a mask on in the stands.
Correct.
That we have made that incredibly clear. There should not be any questions.
When they're in a crowd, we're in a crowd coming in and everything, but if they can social distance in the stands, they're okay.
It's nice, face covering, to be...
Face covering.
Okay, all right, now, what is the rule? Because somebody just texted.
I think the attorney...
What does all that mean?
Attorney green, attorney green.
Attorney green.
It's our resolution, face covering per CDC recommendation needs to be worn when you cannot social distance.
Okay.
So, yes, bring a face covering so that you can get in, get through concessions, but if you're social distance, you can take it off.
Use the restroom.
That'll encourage the people to spread out in the stands, too.
All right, are the players going to be able to use the locker room during games?
Well, there would be instances where we may have to because of weather or otherwise. I mean, we've got to get, keep the students safe, so we would have plans for that to happen. I think in many cases, so restrooms, things of that nature. I don't know that we are encouraging it to be done like at halftime. I think if it's available, I mean, again, these are things that the coaches and the staff and folks will, you know, work with them on. I don't, we weren't like mandating anything along those lines. It's more or less something that the school will decide as what's best and how they can best serve the team.
So if the, if the team wants to use the locker room at Booster, are they going to be able to go in there at halftime and use the locker room? Or are they going to have to stay out on the field?
Again, I would, my answer would be, that would be up, they would decide that as amongst the...
What do you mean, use the locker room?
Are you asking, are you asking whether the locker room will be available to them to use? Because they will be available to them to use based on they, the coaches would make the determination, correct?
If it's up to the coaches, then that's fine, but there's just no clarity on whether or not if the coaches want to take the kids in there at halftime to talk to them or do whatever, are they going to be allowed to do that if they have to be out on the field?
What he's saying is, what he's saying is it's going to be available for them, and it'll be the coaches' decision if they choose to use it or not. Am I saying that right?
Yes, yes, exactly right.
All right.
We're not going to...
I can manage that stuff.
Decide what's best for those students.
And there's not going to be so many participants there. If the coaches do need to have their halftime chat with them out in the end zone, it's not that there's going to be a whole lot of ears listening, because there's not going to be that kind of population there.
A lot of the dads like to stand in the end zone and watch the game and do things like that. Are they going to be allowed to do that?
I don't see why not.
They're social distance.
They're not going to be, they're not going to be socially distanced.
I don't want to see them bunched up on...
They better have masks on.
I don't want to see them bunched up on the fence without a mask on or a face covering.
Right.
If they are, if they are like they do, if they all huddle together, they need to have a face covering on. I would, we would prefer they not do that.
I don't see why it matters whether they're bunched up in the stands or bunched up at the end zone if they got on a mask, Ms. McCall. If the men want to do it, jeez, they've done it, that's what they do.
The thing is, the resolution, our resolution says if they're not socially distanced, they need to have on a mask, so if they're, if they're not socially distanced on the fence, they need to have a mask on.
And no, I don't see that we're giving them assigned seats. I don't see that we're giving assigned seats, Ms. Slaughter. I think they can stand or sit.
That's approved by the CDC, yes.
All right, water bottles, are the players going to have to have their own water bottles for their sidelines for football or any other sport?
That's, that's been the coaches' theme, because my understanding, when they did their summer workout, they were required to have their own water bottles.
They will use, still continue to use their own water bottles so that we can have a semblance to create a lot of non-sharing when it's possible. That all of the schools are working with the trainers and the coaches in all of the sports to determine the best way to handle timeouts, water breaks, and things of that nature that might require, because there's so much interchange with players coming on and off the field, and if their water bottle is 50 yards away, we've got to have a way to help that not happen. So they're all coming up with ways.
You'll probably have some regular plastic, I mean, regular water.
We've talked about cups.
Purchased water that they can use, too.
We've talked about cups and purchased, and purchased water that...
Y'all figure that one out.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good question, because I observed some stuff a few weeks ago at a younger game, and it was not good. I think y'all know about the one I'm talking about. They were not good. It was not safe, it was not sanitary, and we're just blessed that there was not a major break with that one, so. Definitely don't want to see that one with ours, yes, ma'am.
The four-ticket rule, is there ever going to be a time where we're going to have any kind of general admission during the regular season, or is it always going to be four tickets and that's it for everybody? And then if there are only four tickets, is everybody guaranteed to get in with those four vouchers? Or is there a cap at some point? Like you hand out more vouchers than you have tickets for?
They're not going to do that.
Those vouchers need to be dated.
It's four vouchers.
Okay.
So if they have a voucher, they'll be able to get in.
All right.
And as far as later throughout the season, I think this is for the season.
This is for the entire season? And is there, so there's not going to be any parking, is that what we've decided? Because I had a question about that. It wasn't clear from somebody that we can't have pay-for parking to raise money for the programs if we have a home game?
I don't think we can.
I mean, I would encourage the board to consider allowing those schools to make those decisions, and that's, that's how we've put it down.
Yeah, I still think that's a good idea. Let the school make the decision.
I don't want to force anything on anyone. I don't, but that's...
I think that needs to be a school decision based on their logistics and how they can, who they will have. Yeah, who they will have doing it.
And we need to continue following the science. I mean, you know, if, if things continue to trend downward and we're able to open things up more before the end of the season, then that would be a celebration for everybody. But in the meantime, it's having these discussions. Again, the devil's in the details, and it's the logistics and the flow and the management that's going to continue to move things in the right direction. So I say, keep doing what you're doing, because it's working.
And common sense, too, because had we not followed the science in April and all put on masks, we probably wouldn't be in this mess now anyway. But if we'd have put on masks about two months earlier.
Okay.
Common sense, please.
And then do badge volunteers. If volunteers are there to work parking, concessions, anything like that, are they part of the four-ticket limit or are volunteers separate?
No, no, he said each student would get four tickets.
For his family.
For their families.
Or friends, or whatever.
I understand, but if you have like people whose kids are gone and they're volunteering to work concessions or parking or anything like that, do they have to have a ticket or can they get in with a volunteer badge, is the question I have.
I think the coaches line up their own volunteers.
And the way that we are doing it, because I want you guys to feel comfortable with this is, as the schools as well, is that the coaches will, the band director, anyone that is part of that will submit their list in the assigned duty to be kept on file at the school because of tracing, if we needed to, to know that they were a part of it. So it will all be pre-arranged. Now, to Ms. Slaughter's point, if there was an emergency situation and we had to make a change or something, that could be done, but I doubt very seriously if the principal is, and the coaches are asking that person to volunteer, that they would charge them or expect them to...
And we're already slightly under capacity, because you said even Lake Weir has slightly more than 1,000, so we'll still be at our 50% even with volunteers doing it.
We did...
Because you've got that extra.
That's why we factored a little bit, yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
No, they would not.
That's all the text I have at the minute.
Those were such good questions. Melanie, I thank you.
They better speak now before they ever hold their peace.
Melanie, keep asking questions, as...
Thank you, ma'am.
You're a good, you're a good parent activist, Melanie, thanks.
You want me to make a motion, or?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I make a motion, and if I'm incorrect, tell me that I'm wording it wrong, but I make a motion for student athletes to participate in out-of-county competitions. Is that what we're looking for? That's not what we're looking for?
Regional and state.
Regional and state, okay, I'm sorry. See, I told you to correct me. Okay, so I make a motion for student athletes to participate in regional and in-state playoffs. Second.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. McCall, that our athletic department is being allowed in these fall sports to be able to participate in state playoffs and regionals for 2020, 2021 season. Any question?
We need to vote.
Any questions? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
unanimous. All right, Dr. Gullett, do you have anything else?
Just wanted to say thank you again, Mr. Phillips and the entire team that's here today. Thank you for coming and being present, and for all of your work, and on behalf of the school teams, thank you. I know you guys have spent a lot of time on this, so thank you.
The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for September 17, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. Purpose of the work session is to discuss construction projects, update annual public education foundation report, student progression plan, review of district policy 4.21, Florida Safe Schools Assessment 2, Presentation Resolution 2006, face coverings and legislative agenda prep. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for October 8, 2020 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss long-range planning, technology plan update, attorney contract interviews, and custodial staff concerns. Before I get to board concerns, any comments? Thank you, guys, for going through the weeds on this one. I saw you guys, you know, I came over when you guys were in the room, and y'all were scratching our heads, and they were about to look like mine, because y'all were trying to figure this thing out. And so thank you, guys. I know that, I know that the labor that you're putting in is for these kids' safety and for them to be able to showcase their talent, so I appreciate. And the one thing, I do want to say this, the one thing that I am so appreciative about with all of our athletic directors is that we understand sports have a role to play in our kids' lives, but every one of them emphasizes academics first, so that's the main thing. So I appreciate that, so thank you. I did want to make sure I tell you thank you. Nicole, anything? Attorney Green? Dr. Gullett?
No, just as a reminder that tomorrow's work session has a long agenda, so patience required.
Thank you. Ms. McCall?
Thank you. Ms. McCall?
I have nothing. Again, thank you, gentlemen.
Ms. Stacy?
I really don't have anything. I just want to thank Jody. I've known you a long time, and that's why I feel I can speak freely. And you coached my kids, and every, and the kids loved you. And so, thanks for all you do. Sometimes I have to be on this side instead of the parent's side of the podium. And when you bring in the stakeholder, I think everybody learned from this. Because it was such a crazy situation to try, you were pulled in so many different directions. Trying to do what the Florida Association wanted, trying to keep everybody happy. And I think you learned probably, the only way to keep everybody's happy, get those parents in early and get, and all the coaches, get the parents in early. And that saves a lot of grief because there's just some of these decisions, as hard as you try, you just can't make it by yourself. But thanks for what you did. You've done a great job from beginning to now. And thanks for pulling the whole thing back together for us. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Ms. King?
Yeah, I also want to thank Mr. Phillips from the beginning. You, when things were just crazy, you came in with a plan. And it may not follow through with it because we were definitely at a fluid time and just things were constantly changing. But I could tell you were always thinking. And I would like to thank you and all of your coaches and volunteers and everyone for your commitment and your due diligence for our students and our children. Thank you.
Yes, Laura?
Yes, it's, it's because of y'all's commitment to mitigating risk that we were able to have this conversation today. So, you know, my hats off to all of you. Crisis inspires new ways of thinking, new ways of doing things, creativity, collaboration, communication, you know? I, I think that we'll take that forward, you know, what we've learned. So, that's a good thing. It's the only good thing I can think about about this, but, but, but it's good. And I, and I thank all of you. I thank all of you very, very much.
And I, again, I thank, I thank these guys for the work that I saw them putting in and how they were trying to make sure that these kids did have a season in whatever sport. It wasn't just, sometimes, let me say this, sometimes we just kind of get caught up and think it's just football. But there's a whole lot of other sports behind the football that are also as equally important. Football is the big one that we see on Friday night lights. But volleyball is just important, bowling, swimming, cross-country, those sports are just as meaningful to the schools as well. Basketball, basketball, but they are just as meaningful. And they, they, they were not just thinking, they were not just looking, and most of them are football players. They were not just looking through the lens of a football player or a coach. They were looking through the lens of athletics, and I appreciate that. And I do have a question, though. There, I do know that all, all states, all districts in the state are not participating. There were some that did pull out, correct, in South Florida?
Yes, they, and that's been, it's been wavering.
Right.
And as of Monday, I think they are pressing to try the three big, Palm Beach, Broward, and Dade, I think, are trying-
They have their own conference.
Something together.
Right.
Wow, they're in a different situation.
So, and that's what I'm saying, we're in a different time. So, because of that, we know that we would, those, those districts would be in this thing. But because of where they are with this coronavirus and everything, we, we have to adjust. So I'm, I appreciate it that you guys came up with this plan and talked about it and, and came up with a good plan. I do also want to commend Ms. Slaughter for being so diligent with this. I think sometimes she thought that we didn't, she didn't have our ear. We were listening the whole time, Ms. Slaughter. So, and don't ever think that you can't, that we won't hear you because you know we will hear you. So I think you guys came together and put together a great plan. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say one more thing to you guys before I leave this, before I leave this county. You guys have the cheapest and most successful dropout prevention in the country. You're the guys that make the difference in so many kids' lives. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, from all of us. I know that they echo that wholeheartedly. We appreciate your trust and these folks and the coaches and the students. That you guys trust us enough to allow us to take this step forward and, and support their wishes. Thank you.
And the reason that we are able to go forward is because we made some hard decisions a few weeks ago. And I know that they may have been unpopular decisions, but I think they were the right decisions. And I think they put us in a better place for these kids to be successful in the next few weeks and to be very successful in our state playoff system. So, thank you, guys, for that. I appreciate that, so. I really, I really, really appreciate that. We, to my knowledge, we haven't had any outbreaks in our schools. Our kids have been able to practice. Sports have still been going on and everything. They've been conditioning, yeah, knock on wood. And that's a blessing. That's a blessing. Because other districts, other districts have not been as successful as we have.
And I was going to ask, if we as board members want to attend, like volleyball or football, not everybody at the gate knows who we are, and so do we need to let our athletic directors know that we would like to attend?
We get a special voucher? Do we get four?
I don't want to put anybody on the spot. And I want to be sure that if I want to go to the Forest Vanguard volleyball game, that I don't, I want to know.
If you have your badge, we-
We good.
Recognize the badges.
Okay.
So, but yes, always feel free to reach out to any of these guys through email or phone or whatever.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I'll, I'll email you if I'm coming, so that you don't get caught up.
Well, I think it would be nice, like we would do, you know, in the superintendents. I mean, just so that they can properly make sure that everything's taken care of for you.
Right. But, yeah, that's a great question.
Well, I, I just don't want anybody to be embarrassed. I don't have a voucher, you can't get in.
We are recognizing badged employees.
Okay.
As part of what, again, kind of to Ms. Stacy, excuse me. Ms. Stacy's comment about the little wiggle room that we kept was, was for things like that.
I got a, I got a unique question, and Ms. Slaughter, you missed this one. You normally should get, get this, though. This is a unique question. I just thought about it because I normally do certain homecomings. How are y'all going to handle homecoming games?
That's a homecoming meeting.
No, I, I asked that because I normally deal with-
The gentleman in the back of the-
The Netherlands homecoming.
Oh, here he comes.
My house is coming.
The homecoming candy party. Homecoming candy.
He's the homecoming.
We were almost there. We were almost there. Melanie?
I missed, I did.
Tell your parents they missed one. I got it.
Thought I'd escaped this whole meeting without coming up.
You almost were there.
Good morning, all. So-
Good morning.
We, we are working with schools individually right now to create homecoming plans that are scaled down from what we would typically see.
Okay.
So for starters, no homecoming dances. We, we know we can't socially distance within a dance. But we do want to still provide some fun activities for students to be able to do. So some of the traditions, like the Cats Capers at Forest High School, their, their skit that's been going on for decades, you know, those types of traditions, we want to maintain. So I'm working with principals on a case-by-case, school-by-school basis to look at their plans, make sure that we're able to provide safeguards, social distancing, limited capacities in any of these activities that we're doing, modeling it after the athletics and our arts programs and how we're performing.
Okay, thanks. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Maybe they can have a downed fence outside.
I was just thinking that.
The principals have asked that their student government be, be very creative and think kind of outside of the box. And these kids are coming up with some really good ideas.
Yeah.
They are.
That's good.
May I make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman Cummings. So as we're all talking about athletics and homecoming activities, it's just a reminder to our students and our parents and the community that it's all the other outside activities. So we also need to be mindful of making sure that we're being safe. There are a number of school districts and schools around our state who have had closures because of outside activities.
Right.
If we could just, we're doing a lot of due diligence internally. We just ask for patience and understanding and a commitment on behalf of the community to keep our kids safe so we can continue to have high-quality education and athletic events.
And I, I think sometimes people look down on you, look down on people for being cautious. But I'm, I, I go back to the end of last school term. We were cautious in how we proceeded with graduations. Graduations turned out wonderful. We're cautious about how we reopen, and we're cautious about even starting fall sports. It's a reason to be cautious, and, and it pays off from what I'm seeing by being cautious and asking the extra questions and taking those extra steps. So I, I think we proceed, I'm not saying stop or halt anything, but you proceed cautiously. And that's what we've been doing, and I think it's been working for us. So, thank you, guys. Thank you.
I got another text now.
Oh, God.
Is there any way with the technology in a lot of these high schools that they could livestream the games, like on Facebook Live or something? If you guys could just think about that, because there's a lot of kids that have more than four family members and they want to see the game. And if they could, if they, if either the video production people at the school who are employees, or maybe we could get some volunteers to video the games, that would take a lot of stress off people trying to get tickets for family members.
They want a pay-per-view?
It's not pay-per-view. That would be a nice fundraiser.
There's a fundraiser, yeah.
Facebook Live would be a free-
Listen, we make a lot of money for the teams if they pay for it. But Kevin, we'll, I'll talk to Kevin. I'll talk to Kevin.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Alright, there being, there being no other business, may I have a motion to recess? We adjourn. Moved by Ms. Laura, seconded by Ms. McCall. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, meeting adjourned at 10:01.